I mean, it's a minefield of everything you do.
Did you see? Notice of the.
Hey, we're getting there. We're gonna hand it at night. Michelle, we pretty close?
Cause I noticed, I noticed it when we, when I walked in. It's posted, so I was gonna, I haven't seen that.
You good, Michelle? All right. All right, it's 6:00 PM. Let's go ahead and get started with our Riverdale City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. Let the record show all members of the city council are present, as well as members of the city staff and members of the public. We have asked Counsel Arnold if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Could everyone please rise and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Counsel Arnold, and I've asked Counsel Richter if he will offer our invocation.
Our eternal Father in heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to gather together this evening as elected officials, members of the city staff and citizens of Riverdale. We're so grateful for the opportunity we have to work with these good individuals and to bless the lives of citizens of Riverdale and those who may come and visit. We ask thy Spirit might be with us, that we might be prompted and guided to do those things that will continue to bless and have the city prosper and bless the lives of those individuals. We're grateful for city staff, especially our law enforcement and fire officials. Please continue to protect and watch over them. And we ask a special blessing to be upon all of us during these difficult times, bless our national leaders and local leaders as well, as we deal with much uncertainty and tragedy in the recent weeks. We're grateful for all thou does for us. Please continue to bless us and watch out for us, and we pray for these things in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Counsel Richter. We now have a time for public comment. It's an opportunity to address the city council regarding your concerns or ideas. No action will be taken during the public comment. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes, and if you do come up, state your name and the city in which you reside. Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations and reports. First is the mayor's report. I just wanted to mention the day of service that we had last Saturday. Very well attended and very successful. Just a great, great activity. And like Counsel Richter mentioned in his prayer, there's a lot going on and get out there and just work with our neighbors and in a good cause. It just felt good, and it kinda restored your faith a little bit in humanity. I saw Counsel Arnold there. He was leading the crew, and so just to give you a little bit of background, there was somebody appointed from Riverdale, from the Church of Jesus Christ, from their side to kinda organize it, and he had asked for some dumpsters. You know, he was kinda organizing stuff, and we had, I'd reached out to the Lions Club and the UMA and Alpine Church. Anyway, everybody kinda came together, and the city did fantastic, too. They got us a giant dumpster, and there was a little bit of worry whether it would be big enough, and so they got me my key set up so I could go back into public work, because there's three more dumpsters back there. Really didn't know what to expect. And people showed up at the park, and they had trailers. I knew we were in for trouble when I saw the trailers. So anyway, everybody spread out, and man, it was just, I was running from project to project and coming over here, keeping an eye on the dumpster. We were loading it pretty soon. I was like, okay, let's get back there. And so we filled up all three of the overflow dumpsters, and plus we put three of these giant wire, like these wooden spool type things about this tall. You could make tables out of them. We put those back there. Tons of junk, tons of debris, just, and it was just amazing. Like, and people were just coming, and even, we even got so much that they had to take a giant dump trailer to the landfill and dump it, too. And it just, I mean, the before and after pictures were amazing. And people all over the city, as I stopped around at their places, so grateful. I didn't even make it to half of them, but the ones I stopped and talked to, they were just so, so grateful that, and the people would do one project, and then a couple of them were like, wow, there's not enough to do here. I'm gonna go to the next one. Where's the next one? And they're in people's backyards, just projects that you would not even attempt. You just look at the flowerbed full of weeds, full of 10 years of weeds, and you'd be like, I can't do this, and you just go back in your house. But they just got in, and every person took a one-foot section, and it was just amazing and such a great thing. And so, I mean, thanks to the residents and huge thanks to the city. Like, it just came together, just so, so good. And I was a little nervous about what Sean would say on Monday. I was like, trying to head him off, and then I found he wasn't even here.
Gone, yeah.
I was like, that's even under the basket. I don't want him to see what we did to his yard. I mean, there's leaves all over the yard. It wasn't all making it to the dumpster. I did my best to clean it up. I was like, Sean is gonna freak out on Monday. Anyway, he wasn't even here, so. And Norm said he'd get it all cleaned up. He said, no sweat, Mayor, we'll take care of it. Yeah, so never even happened. So anyway, super good, so. Item number two was recognition of one of our planning commissioners, but she is not here tonight, so we will move that to a different week. We'll move on to number three, city administration report. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. Department heads, we got a bunch of them out tonight. They were either slaying Bambi or family commitments. They had other places, so. But all their reports are in there. Do you have any questions on anything that I might be able to help you out with? Pretty standard. I'd gone through most of them, and they seem to be pretty routine. I love to read the police ones. They're always the most entertaining, because we like to see. I don't think people realize what's going on in this city every month. I mean, it's just amazing, and they're not major things, but people don't realize what these guys do. And I've said this before, and we've preached this to the county, we're the third highest call volume in Weber County, which is shocking if you think of what our population is. It should not be that high, but for Riverdale Road and our business district, it just creates a lot of work for these guys, and they handle it so well, so. But kudos to them. Any questions on any of the department reports?
I just wanna say thank you for those. Earlier this year, there was somebody who made a comment on Facebook about after Doge sent out the what did you do last week email, and they said, that's something that everybody, every government entity should do, and why don't we do it at the city? And I responded, we do. All you have to do is look up the.
Council pocket, yep.
The second city council meeting in each month, and all the departments provide a great listing, and I think it's wonderful. If the citizens are looking at it, then they know what's going on.
Yeah. I would add in there, Cody has just about caught up on a lot of his stuff, so next month we will have a little bit more detailed report on some of the financial stuff. So if you're wondering about that, that'll be in next month's packet.
Was the fire department missing this month? Like, I don't remember reading the fire one this, it was, it was missing, wasn't it?
Yeah, well, some of that, because the chief's been gone a lot, and when he's gone, I don't know that any of those other guys are able to fill in on that kind of stuff. Kristin will a lot of times get us some of the numbers, but he's been gone hunting again. It's hunting season, so Public Works and Fire Police are all, they're slim pickings about this time of the year, but yeah, that's why.
I did have one other thing, just, I'm always so blown away by the senior center numbers. I think their highest lunch day was 145 people. Like, I can't believe it, that we can't get some help with that place, because 145 people in one day is just, that's a packed house in that giant room that we have, and then 1,300 for the month. There's no way that the other senior centers are doing that many. There's just no way. And I keep, each month when I read it, I think to myself, I'm gonna go to the other senior centers and see what they're doing, but I just, I don't know.
You're spot on. I mean, it's a travesty, to be honest with you. It's just, it's just unbelievable.
Yeah.
That they let this happen, and they don't seem to care. And I'll give you a little bit more update or meeting with the commissioners later on, and it's covering some of that, so. Okay. As far as employee recognition, we didn't have anybody on an anniversary date, but there were a couple with some significant years. Karen Dilly, 26 years. Karen works up there in Rich's department. Betty Wilson does as well. She's got 11. Matt's over in Sean's department at eight, Kami at eight, and Garrett Henry, the fire department, at seven. And then I see Jeff Adminster on here and think, didn't we just hire him two days ago? And he's at five, four years already. This is when I know I'm getting old, and I've been here too long, so these guys just seemed like they were in here. Staffing authorization, this isn't completely accurate, just because we had some movement this week. We did lose one of our police officers. She is officially gone and down to Salt Lake, and so that doesn't, that shows them being in full, but that they're actually down one now. And Public Works, it shows that they were down one, and I believe they hired, he started yesterday, so those have been caught up, but those will continue to progress, but we're still in much better condition than we have been for quite some time, so. Community development report. Brandon, you wanna give a few words on that?
Yeah. Things are progressing well, as you see, as you drive around the city. We were able to do the Panera Open House, as well as the, oh, it just left me. Yeah, Mission Barbecue, thank you, thank you. Lunchtime at Mission Barbecue is very fun, by the way, if you haven't been. Trader Joe's is progressing well. We've been in contact with them to see when their grand opening might be. We haven't had an official notice yet that will come out to us when they announce it, actually. So we're not privy to any inside information, unfortunately, but we expect that to happen sometime end of October. That's not verified, but that's what we kind of guess based on the progress that they're making at the store. So we'll keep you posted. We'll get that on your calendar when that's ready to go. Any other questions about what's happening?
We do have the honey baked ham.
Oh, that's right.
On a Saturday, like, coming up?
Yeah, it's October 4th, at, I believe it's 12 o'clock, so I put that on your calendar, I think, and so if you can make that, that would be great. They'd appreciate it.
Well, Brandon and I were in Trader Joe's two days ago, was it? And the woodworks up. I mean, that, when they start doing that kind of stuff, you know they're getting close. Still working on some of the overhead sprinklers and things like that, but the checkout stands are in, and it's, it looks like a store. I know Kim's here, she gets all excited. She's a big Trader Joe's fan, but, so I was kinda teasing her a little bit, but we're excited. It is getting close, and it looks like a store. One of the things we were over there for was if you've driven by there, it's hard to see from Riverdale Road, but if you get up close, the paint, the darker paint, has a purplish tinge to it, so it's kind of catches you a little bit by surprise, and that's what we were discussing, not that we were demanding a change. It actually complies with what they had submitted to us, but it looks different in the sun, and I don't think they were expecting it, and we weren't expecting it, so we were just kinda inquiring, you gonna stay with this? Because purple's a little bit odd. And so I don't know what's gonna happen. My guess is that might change before the grand opening. I think that's the feeling we got from them the other day. Again, that didn't come from Trader Joe's or Ashley's, just the people who we met with. I think they were surprised, too, at the difference on that color. It's a majestic gray or something, but when that sun hits it, man, it looks purple, it's purple. Not purple, purple, but you can see it. It looks interesting, but, but yeah, they're really good to work with, and the people that we've dealt with so far, and we're excited. But we will kick in a plan, starting tomorrow, actually, on how we're gonna deal with that grand opening, just simply because of the anticipation of the big crowds, like we did with Raising Canes. The advantage to this one is we got a much bigger parking lot to work with, and we have other areas to work with that we didn't have over there, but we're still restricted, and it's gonna cause some issues on top of everything else. I mean, even the traffic coming down out of the terrace might be a mess. We've only got one light that they can get out on to get them back left on Riverdale Road, but, so it's gonna be a project, and I'm gonna actually hand that off to Casey tomorrow and let him run with it, because he did such a good job last time, and he'll work with Brandon and Sean, and we'll be ready. That gives us about five weeks if we're shooting for the last part of October, so, or if we get into October. We'll have it here before Thanksgiving, for sure. We're not, we're not giving you any dates anymore. We're done with that, so, even though that's what they tell us, it just never works out, but we'll have it ready. Any other questions on any of that stuff that I covered? That's all I had, Mayor.
All right, thanks. We'll move on to consent items. Number one, consideration to approve the meeting minutes from the September 2nd, 2025 council work session and council meeting. Any changes or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. We'll move on to action items. Number one, consideration of Resolution 2025-32, declaring property held by the city as lost, unclaimed, or surplus, and authorizing the use or sale of the same. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, as I mentioned in the pre-planning meeting there, it's just one of the standard ones that we go through whenever we have property of any value. We have to bring it into the council and make sure that you guys declare it a surplus before we can move forward in disposing of it. The bulk of these are all coming from the police department, which includes, well, I shouldn't say the bulk, probably if you totaled them all up, it would be, but a lot of guns. And then we have the administrative fleet is all on this one, too, and we'll be disposing of those vehicles the same way we always have, other than it won't be Chris Stone doing it. It's gonna be Casey this time, so we just keep giving him more and more stuff, but Casey's good at this kind of thing, and like he was saying in that pre-planning meeting, we get a good chunk of that money back, so it doesn't really kill the city too much. We do a really good thing with that. With the cost of the new ones that we're buying here, we think we'll do just as well, if not better, when we turn this next portion around. But anyway, and as we explained in that pre-planning meeting, those guns do go to an authorized dealer who then turns around and sells those. We're not licensed to do that. We can't do that part, but they give us a fair price back on it. We don't take it too much in the shorts, and a lot of them are old, and they've been used. They certainly get their use out of them, so. And then just a couple of little miscellaneous things that we had sitting around, so. Do you have any questions on any of that?
All right. Seeing none, a motion would be in order, Counsel Arnold.
Move to approve Resolution 2025-32 as stated within the packet.
Have a motion, do we have a second? A second. Motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Mayor, can you please pull the council?
Counsel Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Arnold?
Yes.
Counsel Hawes?
Yes.
Counsel Richter?
Yes.
Counsel Stevens?
Yes.
All right, great, that passes unanimously. We'll move on to the comments section of our meeting. Number one, comments from the city council. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the city staff. Any comments for this meeting?
We do not have any.
And I don't have any either? Oh, there we go. Chief, come on up.
I guess I would convey this to you, Mayor, for spearheading the service project with the residents of Riverdale City. It's a huge help for code enforcement, and it encourages our residents to work together, and the ones that maybe, some of them are in a position where they can't because they're elderly or hardship, but some of them that maybe could, it kind of encourages them to make their yards and comply with the code, and maybe even the ones that we didn't hit as a service project, it kind of inspires them as well. So I know it took a lot of effort for you and the residents to come together and include everybody, and so from the police department and code enforcement, we're very grateful. I just wanna convey that. That's it.
Thank you. Yeah. We're grateful for you guys as well, and it is good. It, it's either getting better or worse, the city, you know, and so if we get a few yards looking better, I think it does encourage others, so thank you.
And it was two and a half hours.
Yeah.
Of your time.
Yeah.
Sounds like you had an army, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, if we put the total hours together, it was, it's pretty crazy.
Yeah, it was amazing.
We had, we had kids that were five years old hauling branches out of people's backyard and stuff, so.
Yeah.
It was pretty amazing.
And everybody can help. It was great, yeah.
Cost me a bag of candy, but.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. All right, any other comments from the city staff? And I don't have any comments either, so we would need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All right. We are adjourned. All right. Let's move into our Riverdale City RDA Board meeting for Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. Let the record show that all members of the RDA Board are present, as well as members of the city staff and the public. We now have a time for public comment. Seeing no members of the public, we'll move on to presentations and reports, which there are none, so we are to consent items. Number one, consideration to approve the meeting minutes from the August 19th, 2025 RDA Board meeting and work session. Any changes or corrections to those minutes? All right, seeing none, we would need a motion to approve.
All moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. Action items. Number one, public hearing to receive and consider comments regarding the amendment of the West Bench redevelopment project area budget to provide for 80% tax increment participation over a 20-year period, not to exceed $45,591,683. Mr. Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a presentation for this, so as Michelle pulls that up, I will say that we'll go quickly through this. This is information, a lot of it you have seen so far, but there are some changes since the last time we've met about this. I've been with Riverdale City now for almost a year and a half, and this was one of my first assignments, and so we've been working on this a long time, and it's even preexisted me, for sure. So as the mayor said, or as the chair.
Board chair.
Yeah, thank you. We are looking at an amendment to the existing West Bench redevelopment area, the amendment to the budget, taking it from 100% participation to 80, and taking it from 17 years to 20 years, with a max budget of $45,591,683 versus the current $9 million. So the actual project area which exists, this is an area that was established in '05, is outlined there in the yellow. You're very familiar with that. It's about 74 acres. It was created in 2005. It has a base year of 2011, and it is an area where all of the entities are participating currently at 100%. It has been triggered, the trigger year for tax collection was tax year '25, but we have not collected any tax increment on this project area thus far. It's one of the few areas that still exists that is governed by a taxing entity committee instead of through inter-local agreement between the agency and the participating entities. Here's a timeline. You've seen this again before, but for the record, it's here, '05 is the creation year. The base year was established in 2011, but the actual budget adoption was made in 2012. You see there, it's the original 15 years with a $9 million cap at 100% participation. In 2019, there was an amendment to the budget via the tech and the board at the time where they changed the collection period, where the trigger had to happen between 2020 or 2025. We actually did that in 2024. In 2021, there was some state legislation that allowed the agencies to extend certain districts based on the COVID pandemic, and so that happened and took the existing project area from 15 years to 17 years. And then in 2024, we began the process of amending the budget to what you are seeing tonight. The development objectives and the project area plan is not changing. Those are all still the same. We're just looking at the budget, but you can see what those objectives are here. Strengthening the tax base and developing vacant land are two of the major priorities of the district. We do have Ms. Kim Cho here, representing America First Credit Union, and that, as you know, is one of the major reasons why the budget amendment is necessary, because throughout the life of the plan, since '05, there has been new development opportunities with the decision of America First to establish a campus up at the West Bench. So those are some of the key projects that would come about based on this budget amendment. Most of that is, again, driven through the America First Campus Project. And here, just for reference, is a rendering that they've provided for us that shows the full buildout of both the current area and land to the north that's not in the current West Bench RDA, but I wanted you to see the big vision, as you've seen it before. We've also shared the same vision with the taxing entities as we've negotiated with them to get their participation from the 100% down to 80, but extending the years. And so we've been very clear that although we're amending the West Bench RDA, the current RDA tonight, there is the intent for us to return to the taxing entities and to the board at a future date and create a CRA, which would comprise the land to the north of the existing RDA to complete the full budget that's necessary for the infrastructure improvements. Speaking of those infrastructure needs, here's a short list of some of the things that we've identified that is necessary to be implemented up at the West Bench to facilitate not only the America First growth, but the other growth that might be associated up there. You can see the total cost is, it was 42 million. It's growing as each day goes by, and I've included some maps of what that infrastructure looks like. Again, this is for the whole area. You can see where some of those things are, both in the West Bench RDA existing district, and then what would be in the future CRA. Here's a kind of an outline of what those things are. They're transportation-related, utility-related, access, those kind of things, all of which have been the thing that has prohibited development from happening up in that area for a lifetime. And so without the budget amendment, without the infusion of the tax increment that's necessary and which is being requested tonight, then it's unlikely that any of this development would occur in the manner that's being proposed. So here's a look of the current budget. As I mentioned, this is an existing RDA. It has 17 years in terms of duration, with the first tax year being 2025, and the entities that you see there are all participating, including Riverdale City, at 100%. I know this is small. I've got a bigger slide upcoming here, but this shows, again, we're talking about just West Bench, but I wanted to make it clear as to what our intentions are. The first table there at the top is what's being proposed tonight, the amendment to the current RDA budget, which takes it from 100% to 80, 17 years to 20, and it increases the budget exponentially from $9 million to $45 million, roughly. And then the table below is what we anticipate being the request to the entities for the future CRA, which you see there in the orange on the map, the purple being the current boundary. So here's that budget again in summary, a little bit bigger so you can read that. You can see there, under the column of the nominal TIF life contributions in that second box there, you'll see that Riverdale City would be contributing over the life of the new RDA, $6.7 million in future value. That present value is about $3.4 million. So here's just a summary of what I've been saying, the current RDA versus the amended RDA with the new numbers and years. And again, that's based on the significant investment that has emerged from America First efforts there and their goals of creating that campus and all of the commercial energy that will happen because of it. And then we don't need to necessarily cover each one of these, but I do have here for the benefit of the public and the record that, just an investment summary and the benefit to each entity, I do believe that tax increment finance and tax increment participation in the form that the state law allows does benefit the participating entities, because in the case that we see here with this project area, that the private market forces would not yield the same result unless there was some type of participation. And so it's a self-fulfilling prophecy in some cases, and so I do believe that there is benefit, even though folks are seeing it as an expense. It really does bring about a higher yield. And so in the case of Weber County, as they would invest over the 20 years, $8.8 million, they've already received $696,000 from the progress that has been made in this RDA, because we haven't collected those as an agency. And because they're participating at only 80% during the life of the 20 years that they would be participating, they'd receive $2.2 million. And so if you compare that, that future revenue to what they're getting today, you can see there, they're collecting, based on what's out there in 2024, from taxable valuation, they're collecting about $55,000 at the end of the 20-year period, based on the investment schedule that we've projected with America First and others, they'll be getting $721,000. There is not a market condition that can bring that same kind of conclusion, but for the incursion of some tax increment finance, and so that's the benefit of what each entity looks like. And so you can see just those two bullet points. And so you can see just those two bullet points. You go to the school district, current collection $254,000. After the expiration of the district, $2 million. Riverdale City, we're getting about $67,000. We anticipate at the end $548,000. And it just goes similar to each entity.
Sorry, go back to mosquito.
Oh, yeah, he wants to see the mosquito.
Mosquito? Oh, yeah, okay. And we covered this in the board meeting. So you're collecting about $3,100. You sit on the board there. And at the end of the district, we anticipate about $42,000.
Let me just ask real quick.
Yeah.
You came twice and made a presentation. Did you do that with all the taxing entities?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked. It's been a fun year and a half. We have presented this, this proposal of amending the budget to every entity multiple times. It did change. We initially had an 80% over 22 years, and that's the public hearing that we had previous to this one. But it finally settled at 80 over 20. And so we had a taxing entity committee, which is required by state statute, which is comprised of all of the entities we've been working with. So everyone, I actually don't have a summary, but all of these entities here that I've listed, they are those who comprise the tech. The tech is required to vote on the proposal which we've made. I've included that resolution in your packet. Mr. Adam Long, our RDA attorney, has certified that resolution from the tech as being appropriate and compliant to state law. And so the tech has voted. It was not a unanimous vote. The county voted no. But because of the way that the tech works, it's a majority vote. And so the resolution passed. And so you do have the approval of the tech tonight as you make your decision as the agency board.
Yeah.
These taxing entities that have boards, of course, anytime there's a taxing entity to maintain integrity of public funds, you have to have essentially elected officials, so you have people from the various municipalities and so on. But I was kind of stunned because there was somebody from most of the municipalities in Weaver County, to include Weaver County itself, were, didn't know. Maybe it's ignorance, not having seen this before. I don't want to use the word ignorance, but it's just because this seems very rare. And so there was a lot of uptick in trying to get educated, to understand. Because people, there's maybe a natural mistrust of what's going on. Did you get that kind of pushback from the other taxing entities?
What you're saying is correct. There's a broad misunderstanding of the tax, the use of tax increment finance. There has been, we were just talking about this earlier. There is, over the last number of years, there's been a lot of misunderstanding and misinformation about how entities participate. What hasn't helped here is that we are under old statute. And so some of the confusion of the members of various entities was based on the fact that they weren't used to the tech model. They're used to having an agency come to them, make a proposal. They enter into an interlocal agreement based on a vote. And typically, the smaller districts, especially the mosquito abatement, but most of the districts don't do that because they're generally not a high contributor via interlocal agreement. And they all have now adopted certain policies that even set those participation limits low. And so generally speaking, the agencies around the county, in this case, or even around the state, it's not best practice to approach the individual special districts for participation under the current law. But this is operating under the tech law, and so they're automatically participating based on the year that this was originated. And so there was some confusion. There was multiple conversations that we've had, both publicly and privately, to help people understand why this is happening now. And ultimately, we were successful by having all of those entities either send a representative to the tech to speak on their behalf, or the special district, in the case of the special districts, they all elected one individual to represent them, which is Kevin Hall from Central Weaver Seward District, and he voted on all of their behalf. And so it was, it was successful except for the county. They did not want to participate.
Do we know why?
I was just gonna ask.
They claimed it was because it's outside of their policy now. They won't go above the 80% participation, and we were asking for a higher amount for that. The thing that's different about this one is we'd started this before they even implemented that policy and had been asking for those higher numbers before. And there's a lot of background on that, but suffice it to say, it worked out in our favor. And a short answer to your question, Bart, is it was almost refreshing when we got in there and got the vote and the support we got from these other entities, because I think they saw the vision. They saw what this was going to do, and they saw what it was going to do for them. And really, the county should have been in the same seat. They just chose not to, so.
Yeah.
You know, it kind of put me in the hot seat because they said Riverdale is doing this. And Bart, can you explain? I said, not really. You know, but when you came in with your slideshow and you dazzled, I mean, you're able to answer the questions because, boy, I mean, this is going into the weeds that even us, we are kind of in a learning curve on. And I appreciate, because this is, there's a lot involved and, you know, you've got your consultant. And so anyway, your presentations went off really well.
Thank you. It is a difficult concept because you're talking about money that doesn't exist in most cases. Mr. Long has a broader perspective. I've been doing this for 20 years, but only in now two and a half cities. Adam's been doing it in many, many cities and on many different levels. So he probably has a much broader perspective of the difficulty it is and has been on getting elected officials and others to understand the benefit. And tax increment finance has not always been used, from an agency's perspective, in an appropriate manner, meaning that projects that were funded via tax increment didn't come to the fruition that they anticipated. They use tax increment in ways that they shouldn't have. Reporting has suffered. Metrics were loose, in some cases nonexistent. And so, so it's evolved over time, but elected officials really have had plenty of time to get up to speed. And in fact, the state is creating new tools, things like, I'll throw out a bunch of acronyms, but HTRZs, inland port authorities, all of these different types of tools that are used to develop, fund development and infrastructure deficits in a lot of cases. And they're all essentially using the tax increment finance model, where you're taking the new growth of a development that wouldn't have happened but for the initial investment. So it is an effective tool. It's created a massive amount of new growth in the state of Utah. And it's something that, this is one of the best projects that I've seen in my 20 years that in terms of justification, the quality of the partner, the level of investment and the need, all of those things, I think, get, those boxes get checked in this project. And I think it's one of the best that the state has seen, and certainly one of the best in Weaver County. So we were shocked that the commissioners didn't see that, but here we are. So on the lower table there, I know you can't read that very much, but that does show you that we, again, we do have intentions of creating a new CRA. As a board, you've already approved the survey area that kind of kicks that whole process off. And so you'll see me back again in the future with a draft project area plan and a draft budget. But before I get to you with that, we will be approaching Weaver County, Weaver School District, Riverdale City. We won't be approaching Central Weaver Seward District or any of the other special districts because, as I said, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. But we will be asking Weaver County, Riverdale City, and Weaver School District to participate in the new CRA. And we've adjusted our numbers to be more in line with their individual policies, so we're hoping that that will go well. And it will be a totally different process for those entities, but you, as a board member of the mosquito abatement, won't have to deal with it.
Counselor Richter.
Thanks for the presentation. I think you answered most of my questions in advance, so I appreciate that. Just a couple, I just want to make sure I read the packet right. So there was a line in there that talked about housing, low-income housing, but there was no budget for it. There was like 50 units, I think, if I saw that right, but there was no budget. And is that, did I misread that, or am I missing something there?
So because this is a project area under a tech authorized in 2005, during that process, they also amended out, or they waived any housing contribution. So there is state code that requires some form of set aside for affordable housing. That was waived. And there was a waiver of any admin contribution. So as an agency, we're not collecting admin fees, which we otherwise could have. That was waived, and we're not amending that in this proposal, nor are we amending the waiver of the housing. The CRA will have specific requirements for the housing set aside. And housing is an eligible expenditure within the project area, but it's yet to be determined where or if that housing will take place.
Okay, so the notice of like 50 housing, is that accurate or not?
I'm not sure.
On the top corner, on what is it, on page eight, the little spreadsheet up there in the top corner, it's got like 50.
Oh, that was just.
Affordable housing units.
Yeah, that was just a note for ourself.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not relevant.
And then, and then help me, just on your confidence level of the number, so I know you kind of look at that 6% number. How do we come to that? Is that kind of standard? Is that a bond thing that we kind of look at to evaluate that? Or is it a market value?
Yeah, we look at a kind of a market discount rate, and that's now fluctuated even, even since we put this together. But we're talking about 20 years, so we kind of look back for a while and use that historical look going forward to come up with a reasonable discount rate.
Confidence level's pretty good. I know this is a difficult.
It's really, all I should now go to Kim, because it's really a function of the level of investment and the pace of investment. And so all of these numbers are, and we spent hours and hours talking about at what years were these buildings going to get built, and how much, how big are they, and how much do they cost? And so that really is the greater function of the spreadsheet versus the discount rate or the present value rate. And so it is a function of America First investment. If they don't invest, then the numbers don't play out, but then the need goes down, right?
Makes sense. Yeah, I know. So valuation goes up like by six years. It's like quite high, jumps quickly, and then it kind of levels.
Right.
A little bit. And that's, I guess that's a representation of what we're talking about here. Thank you.
So put pressure on her after the meeting.
Any other questions? Counselor Hawes or Board Member Hawes?
I was just gonna say that I was on the council when this was created. And I remember it was actually a fairly difficult process at that time to get the tech to approve it then. And then because of the issues with the way the tech works, the law was changed not too far after that. And so that's why most people who are in the positions of those entities now don't even, I mean, any RDA that was in force at that time has probably been wound down.
Yeah.
And so they don't deal with it at all. So most of them don't have any clue of what a tech is.
Right. And we experienced that as we met with the individual entities.
Yeah, they're all, they're all experienced with the new method of doing it, and they can opt out. But with the tech, you can't opt out.
Right, it's a function of a majority vote. So, yeah, even if you didn't want to participate, you may be participating, in the case of the county. So Chair, that's my presentation. We do have Mr. Long here. He is much smarter and much taller than I am, so.
You can keep going on this.
If we have any questions for him, we do need to still have a public hearing at some point. But if you would like to ask Mr. Long any questions, we could have him come up.
Unless you have anything to add or change.
No, this is, in my opinion, really a spectacular project.
Okay.
Well, just.
Board Member Richter. Oh, sorry, not Richter, sorry, Stevens. Yeah.
So this has been triggered, the, it has been triggered this year. So they'll, we will see, or the entities will see returns when?
That's a really good question. I'm glad you brought it up. I'll kind of take it a different direction. So if you look in the resolution towards the end, there is a paragraph that says that even though the budget is being amended for 80% over 20 years, the first year, which is tax year 2025, collected in calendar year 2026, that first year is 100% participation. And the reason for that is our amendment is coming after the certified tax rate by the county, and they had to plug in a number. And so they plugged in what was currently approved at the time, which is 100%. So the agency will collect 100% of the new growth between 2011 and 2025 in 2026. And then it will then adjust to 80% thereafter. And so the city, so because we're kind of two hats here, the city's revenue will actually drop, as will all the other entities, because they've been, they've been receiving that money instead of participating with the agency. And so the revenue that the city sees in this area that has been defined, this yellow box, so the taxes the city collects from the properties in this area will decline starting in 2026, but the RDA's revenues will increase. And that's the case with all of the entities.
And that gap will close as soon as we see new taxable value.
That's right.
Created in the project area and should close pretty quickly.
So the entities after this year will collect their tax rate on the value that these properties had in 2011?
No. Well, so the base year is 2011, and that base number is roughly $19 million. That's always a fixed number. Because we didn't trigger the collection as an agency until tax year '25, the entities have been collecting based on the each year's valuation. And so now in 2025, the entities will get 0% of 2025's taxable value, minus the $19 million, because that's always fixed. So they'll just get the $19 million for 2025. The agency will get the rest. In tax year 2026, the entities will get the $19 million plus the new growth up to 80%. Or excuse me, sorry, 20%, 20%.
That's, that's what I.
I need a chalkboard.
Yeah, it's followed you until, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Boardman Richter, you, we're good?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and get this public hearing open. We need a motion to open it.
So moved.
We have a motion to open a public hearing. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Marigoni, will you? Okay, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All right, it's open. Saying that, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. All right. Action item number two. Before we head into this, I just want to give you one little bit of commentary. These guys have kind of indicated to you about how difficult this has been. But I think, I think they want to maybe downplay it just a little bit, and Mr. Brooks is shaking his head just a little bit.
I wanted to say something, Mayor, but I'll wait till you're done.
I don't know. It has been crazy, and I don't know if anybody could have done it, except for Mr. Cooper. Like, we had meetings planned and then canceled at the last minute because Kevin Hall wasn't technically appointed by his special district. And I mean, he has just pulled and pulled everybody together. We had forces working against us in the background, telling people that what we were doing was illegal. And we had our RDA attorney say, no. And we had our RDA attorney say, no, I'm an RDA attorney and it's not illegal and your attorney is not an RDA attorney. And I don't even know how far to go into this because I know this is all the record and I don't want to cause too much trouble, but I really would like to cause some trouble, but I'm not going to. Let's just say you guys, I mean, it has been amazing watching it. And, and I think some people would have just said, whatever, like whatever, it can be done. Questioned, I've seen him questioned, his integrity questioned. I've seen, I've seen some pretty dirty things to be honest. And it's just, it's just gotten ugly and I don't know what the deal is. Thankfully, it was under a tech, to be honest, because majority ruled in that case and it just, it went through. Anyway, I just want to get that out there. I don't know if you want to say something now, Mr. Brooks.
I'll wait till after the vote, if that's okay, Mayor. I don't want to be accused of influencing anything, but yeah, let's take your vote first.
All right. So we have before us consideration resolution R 2025-07, amending the West Bench redevelopment project area budget to provide for 80% tax increment participation over 20-year period, not to exceed $45,591,683. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none, Count, Board Member Arnold.
Move to approve resolution R 2025-7, as stated within the packet, not to exceed $45,591,683.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion at a second. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Marigoni, please pull the board.
Board Member Hanson?
Yes.
Board Member Richter?
Yes.
Board Member Stevens?
Yes.
Board Member Hawes?
Yes.
Board Member Arnold?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Very good. Do you want to say something now, Mr. Brooks?
I would, if that's okay.
Yeah.
And I, I just wanted to follow up kind of on what you're saying. I already had some thoughts in my mind. But what I wanted to say, when I look at this and Brandon throws some, some dates up there, this started in 2005. It actually started earlier now. And, you know, I feel like I've been working on this my whole life, not just my career, my whole life. This has been brutal. I don't even know, I've never had anything like this. I don't, Stacy might remember this. When I interviewed for the job as the city attorney here in Riverdale, one of the questions they asked me, I still remember this, was what, how much work I had done in RDAs. And I was honest, I came from rural Idaho and there's not a lot of RDAs in Milleda, Idaho. I can tell you that much. And I told them zero, I haven't done any, but I know there are people who do and I knew how to find them. And that's how my RDA career started off here with Riverdale City. My whole career here, I have been working on this West Bench. And it started out with the vision from Larry Hanson. When we got wind that the power company was going to buy that piece of ground, which they had bought right on the road. And Larry thought, if they build there, we'll never be able to develop that. And so let's go and negotiate with them, which we did and talked to him into pulling it off that road. And then he looked at it and said, well, we can't do much with these power lines in here. And that was our primary objective, how this whole thing started, let's move these power lines so this could be developed. And it's just been amazing to me as I've watched this thing from its infancy to where we are now and where we're going to go. This is just an incredible project for Riverdale City. I mean, we've, we've got a, brought a Tesla in there that we never dreamed would happen. Anybody, I don't think any of us did. It just has been amazing. We've got, we're going to get two brand new bridges, not just bridge replacements, but massive adjustments that we needed drastically. And, and I look at this team here and I just can't help but think how fortunate we were. Adam is the third RDA attorney I've worked with on this thing. That's how far we go back. Kim, when I met with Kim for the first time, when I was first put in as a city administrator, America First wasn't even a player in this. I went up there as a courtesy, just to inform them of some of the stuff that was going on. And look what's happened to that since that's changed and America First has jumped in on this. And Brandon, I don't know, the timing of that couldn't, I don't know how we could have done that any better. Because when we interviewed for that position, there was one person that clearly stood out because of his knowledge in RDAs. And we didn't think we'd be able to get him here. And we had to pull some strings and really negotiated and twisted all kinds of stuff to get him here. But we knew how important and how vital that was. The timing of that couldn't have been any better because we were right at the door at that point, knocking on it, but we couldn't even get it open. And not only did we open it, we kicked it down, is basically what we did. And I mean, kudos to all these guys. I mean, it's been a team project, but this is a huge benefit for Riverdale. I mean, you guys will, you guys will, long before, I mean, after we're all gone here, the city's going to benefit from this. So it's been a great thing and congratulations to all of us. Adam's been wonderful. Watching him go toe to toe with the previous owner was the, the joy of this whole thing for me. Just because it was just fun to watch and everybody did their parts and their roles. And we've had some nasty meetings and, and it's been pretty ugly, but I think it's been well worth it. But kudos to the team for what, what they've accomplished here. So that's all I had to say, Mayor.
And I, I hope that, I mean, I hope you caught that $950 million amount that America First is looking, I mean, that's basically a billion dollars. And I hope that someday people will look back and think, man, that RDA, they set us up by approving that and getting that, that project. I had someone come to me early on in my, my time as the mayor that was telling me what a great job Leon Polson did and, and seeing the vision of Riverdale Road. And I hope people look back at you guys and are like, man, that RDA board and you know, that, that, the city, whoever, got that thing set up and now it's churning out massive, you know, property tax every year. And it, it's kind of a way for us to diversify our income, finally. Unless they take property tax away, which would be just about par for the course, I think, they banned property tax, but.
I am proud to say Riverdale is the home of America First Credit Union.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. And, and that will be a selling point. I mean, going forward as that campus develops, I think it will be a real, a real jewel in our crown that just is like.
I think with this, we should get better rates.
And that is, you know, obviously down the road, we will expect that, you know? I mean, if we have Kim here, then it's very nice. But anyway, okay, very good. Enough patting ourselves on the back, right? Okay, let's move on to number three. Consideration resolution R 2025-08, adopting and implementing an independent living policy for the senior center apartment facility. Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor, or Mr. Chairman in this case. As I mentioned in a pre-planning meeting, as far as, you know, we, we, we have this housing development or the apartments over there at the senior center. And we've always labeled them as, as independent living, but we've never had a policy to say, even define what independent living was. And so as we continue to see these different things occur, it's, it's just been fascinating the last two or three years how this has played out. We just keep having one after another, after another, after another, which is almost demanding that we, we implement some of these policies to protect us for legal, legal reasons. And so that's what this one is. We've run into this twice, some pretty serious ones within the last two years. And it was just time to get something in place to, to protect us, not only protect us, but to make sure that we're consistent on these things and how we deal with them and how we handle with them. Because at some point in time, I'm not going to be here, Rich isn't going to be there. And so other people are going to come in and we've got to have these things in place. And that's what this one is, is just an attempt. It defines what independent living is. It lists how we go about this and stuff. And it makes it a lot easier for us to deal with these situations that we keep running into out there. And I think we're certainly in a much better position if we have these things in place, if and when we ever do get sued on one of these issues that we're, we're doing things right and we're doing it in the right way. And that was the intent of this. I don't know if you had any questions on any of the specifics about it. There's quite a bit in there. Like I said, most of those attachments and things at the end of that, I think the first six or seven pages of the actual independent living portion and the things attached to it were just the forms and things that we will use as a staff to evaluate these situations and make sure that we're, we're being consistent and treating these people fairly and still making sure that they're protected and taken care of over there, besides just the city, so.
Board Member Richter.
Yeah, no, the presentation looks good, the forms and everything, so it looks fairly comprehensive. You don't, you don't anticipate any costs or anything to administer this?
No, I, I think we can handle it the way we're set up. We've, we've sort of done it this way, just not formally. It's kind of been Rich and I sitting down when these, these problems, these problems come up and then we have to deal with them on a, on a case by case basis. And we'll still do that. It's just that we have a, a plan now and a format that we can use and rely on. And so that we're treating people the same, no matter who it is. And all their situations are always different, but you know, when you're dealing with elderly, there's an issue there, health. There's so many issues from a legal perspective that it's just, it's scary. I mean, and I, I keep telling you guys that, but this thing is just, it keeps me up at night sometimes. And so the more of these that we can get in place and protect ourselves, I think the better.
Board Member Stevens.
Whenever any time something for the senior center is on an agenda, usually we have people here. Was this being, has it been presented to the senior board or discussed? Or is this, is this more of our policy?
This is an internal administrative kind of thing that we're doing that, like we have no rules. We have no definition. We have nothing over there. We're just, we're just dealing with it. I mean, we, we've handled the rent situation pretty well, but the actual, you know, who's allowed to come in. And one of the things we run into is because we're still fairly inexpensive when it comes to rentals, when these individuals no longer can really meet our criteria and take care of themselves, they're not independent anymore. We get resistance from the families. They don't want to move them because it's, it's still cheaper than what they can find out there. And that puts us in situations because if we ever had a fire or something like that, you know, we have an individual who's handicapped and unable to hear the fire alarms or, or be able to get out, we could have somebody killed over there. And so that's what worries us. And so this is just all internal. We will be getting them, once you approve this, then we will get them copies of this when their new leases come into place, which will be coming up here shortly too. We'll have them sign off on this so that they recognize they've received a copy of this. We've been telling them, a lot of these things are coming up. It's not anything new. It's how we're operating now. It just, it protects us a whole lot better and we have it in writing and they'll have it in writing now as well, so.
Board Member Hawes.
But, but this is not part of the senior center.
Not the senior center, this is the housing.
This is the housing.
Just the housing only, yes.
It's only, it's only affects the people who are leasing the house.
That is correct.
And so.
That is correct.
So it wouldn't have anything.
No, day to day seniors won't be affected by this at all.
Center or the.
Right.
Board or anything like that.
Okay, so it's just the rental units?
Right, right. Nothing to do with the seniors. It's, it's just, you're, you're, you're rocking a real fine line. If we want to call that a independent living center, well, where does, you know, people with disabilities and age, there's so many factors that come into this that could bring a lawsuit to us. And we just got to get it cleared up and make sure that we're covered and we're protected. And I think this is a good step, at least in that direction. But yeah, it has nothing to do with the senior center. It's just the renters.
Okay. Any other questions? Board Member Arnold.
Move to approve resolution R 2020, 2025-08, as stated within the packet.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion at a second. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Marigoni, please pull the board.
Board Member Richter?
Yes.
Board Member Stevens?
Yes.
Board Member Arnold?
Yes.
Board Member Hawes?
Yes.
Board Member Hanson?
Yes.
Okay. That passes unanimously. Very good. Number four, discussion, item, senior center grants. Mr. Brooks.
Thank you. Just by way of an update on, again, this, this involves the whole senior center, but the grants was one of the things that was specifically asked when we talked about this before. At that time, we were, we had a meeting set up with the county commission and one of our legislative leaders is going to try and help us with some of these grants. We did have that meeting. It went about how we expected, I think. Again, I got to be careful with what I say here. It's just really discouraging because, you know, what we had mentioned earlier, our senior center is by far the most active and the most productive in the county and yet we get no recognition or help with it. And I think that's just unfortunate. I don't know how they get there, what their priorities are, but that's neither here nor there. When these people that are outside, like these legislative leaders are seeing this, they're scratching their heads just like we are, going, asking what's going on? We don't know. We don't get any answers. I think by the end of that meeting, we made some headway. This was just with the commissioners, the Weber Human Services didn't, I think they were invited, but I don't think they, they chose not to show up. But I think we made some headway with them. I don't know how far it's going to get. It's really none, to be honest with you. But I still think the headway with the state and getting a grant from them could happen. And we're still working that. We're meeting with them regularly. We're putting together a package right now as we speak for some information that they've requested from us. Not just this legislator, we've got three of them that are interested in this. Two of them represent us, so we're putting all that together now. But I still have some hopes that we will get some funding. But again, it's not going to be a permanent deal unless something changes between now and then. But at least we're getting some ears that are listening to us, but it's not our local leaders. In addition to that, looking at the, the fee scales and all those kinds of things, just because, you know, that affects what we're going to be able to do and not do and when those grants get more important. Rich is putting together packages that will be coming up to you pretty soon. He's looking at a couple of different, almost a two-tiered thing, but he's going to present that to you as both, just not just senior lunches, but maybe even a membership fee. He's got a couple of things in mind. Some of them sounded pretty interesting. So he didn't quite have that ready for tonight and I'd prefer that he gave that to you anyway because that's kind of been his baby. But that's getting close and so you'll be seeing that pretty soon. As I mentioned, we're still talking to the state and all that kind of stuff. In addition to that, Rich did meet with Ramp about grants from them. And he had made a grandma request to them, wanting copies of all their grants, which I think caught them a little bit off guard because they have to respond to that. And we wanted to see why everybody else around here is getting grants and we're not, so that we could see what other people are putting in those things. And I don't think they were really excited to produce all that because it was quite a substantial amount of information. But they did reach out to Rich and he's met with them and he'll be working with Michelle on that. Our hope is that we can start getting some of those because some of those things can be used for either not, maybe not all of that, but parts of that program that we have. So all of that's in motion. It's just, it, it's moved a little bit since we last updated you, but that's kind of where we're at. None of it's dropping by the, the wayside. We're still working it. It's just a little bit slower than what we had hoped, but we're, we're getting close and we'll start seeing some movement on this thing, so. Any questions on any of that that I covered there?
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Any comments for this meeting from the board, city staff?
I think we're good. You good, Casey? Casey always comes up with some good, good remarks there at the end, so.
The representative for America First, Ms. Cho, made the effort to be here and we haven't heard from her. Did she want to present?
If I can make a comment, I would love to. Is that appropriate?
I, I think it's up to the chair if you want to.
Oh yeah, you can. Yes, please.
I know.
We should have given you a chance to comment earlier.
No, that's okay. I wasn't sure what was appropriate. But I just want to add my thanks and appreciation to Riverdale City and especially to Brandon. It has been a crazy process. I've learned so much about RDAs, more than I ever thought. I should probably have a master's now because Brandon's been so good to help educate and teach us all about it. But on behalf of America First Credit Union, we're so excited to be able to continue our relationship with Riverdale City, to really establish more of a campus here and a presence. We look forward to the growth. Yes, this is a 40-year plan and excited to see what happens in at least the next 10 years that I'll be part of it. But exciting things happening and we're just appreciative to have the support from the city administration and from the RDA board to help make this happen. Living here in Riverdale, it's exciting to, to watch what will happen because of the growth that will come from letting us bring more of our employees here and continue to serve not only the citizens of Riverdale, but all of our members. I love working for America First Credit Union. I've been there for 30 years and I'm just appreciative of what they've done for me personally, as a member, as an employee, and also to watch what's going to happen as a citizen of Riverdale City. So thank you again. It's been a crazy ride and I know it's not over yet. We'll be back because we'll want to bring our, I hope we don't have to go head to toe like you had to with the previous owner of the property. But we look forward to helping support the infrastructure and the growth here in Riverdale City. So thank you and I appreciate you giving me opportunity to talk.
Thank you.
We can give all of you a round of applause. It's pretty awesome. Having that going from nine, because for the time that I've been on the board and going from the nine, we.
It's amazing.
Getting the 9 million just to move the power lines to this is, is like jaw dropping.
It is. It is. Larry Hanson would be proud. Well, he didn't dream of this and Larry was a dreamer, but he didn't dream of this. This is incredible, so.
And I was brand new when they got that budget, that 9 million. I didn't know what it meant. And Larry doesn't get too overly. And Larry doesn't get too overly excited, usually. And he was very excited.
It was a battle.
He was ecstatic to get that that budget in 2012. That was like my first year. And I was like, what does that mean? So anyway, cool. I did have one comment that that kind of has to do with America First area, I guess. But hopefully, you're getting some updates on the bridge project. UDOT is saying that the 84 section is still on schedule. And so they're saying first part of October, that should open. It is UDOT, so anyway, that's what they're saying.
Is there going to be a lapse between when they tear it down and?
Yes, huge lapse. They're going to, they're cutting it back, from what I understand, and then they'll open it, and they'll begin building the two bridges on site. And then sometime in the spring or summer, they'll close it for three days and swing them into place. Is what I think I heard.
We don't know when it's going to close quite yet, the ramp. Okay.
But that'll be exciting to be able to get back up there and get on the new road. That will be a big, exciting time, hopefully, the first part of October.
And the roundabout, if you haven't seen that, that's it's up and going.
I drove on it. Yeah, you can get in from the Tesla side and go drive on the new road. It says America First only, but, you know, whatever.
Just go make the circle.
Just pretend like you're lost and just, oh, shoot, was there a sign? I don't know. But anyway, yeah.
And they've taken extra precaution to divert truck traffic away from the new roundabout. So kudos for that. So all the all the trucks are moving internally on the site so they don't ruin it before we ever even get to use it. So that's great.
So a few weeks, fingers crossed that that will open.
I am getting the emails from.
Yeah.
UDOT, and they haven't mentioned anything about the I-15 portion.
No. And maybe we can announce that at the same time we get the date for Trader Joe's for kind of an offsetting type thing. Hey, there's a 45-day delay. But also, we got Trader Joe's on this date. And I don't know. Yeah, we'll see. At some point, we're going to have to tell them. We we did get a big email from the PR lady. So, yeah, we're trying to decide how to handle that exactly. But at some point, we've got to tell everybody that that's not going to open. So maybe we'll do it after the 84 part gets open. I don't know. Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we need a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Motion, do we have a second? Okay, motion to second. All in favor, say yes. All right, we're adjourned.
Thanks, man. I'll get that stuff to you.
Thank you.
I may not get it to you in the morning, but. Man, well, and I was thinking, we are probably on the plan for.